Deputy Mayor Moss, did you want to do an audio test before we get started?
Testing, testing, is that working? Can you hear me? Hello? Brianna?
Test, test, test.
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Monday, June 24th, 2024. It is 7:00 PM and it's time for the Lakewood City Council Study Session. Due to the fact that I am remote, it is necessary for me to pass the gavel to Council Member Bokey. Council Member Bokey, please conduct the meeting.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Moss. We have four members present and Council Member Moss at present via phone. And our first item of business for the Lakewood City Council Study Session tonight is for a review of roadway designs for the South Tacoma Way Improvement Project and the Nyansha Road Southwest Project. So these are two projects that we've had on the books for a while. And I'd like to call down Mr. JB Herr, our Associate Civil Engineer. And we are actually going to get up and move to these tables because the Public Works Department has graciously put together some very large maps for us to go through.
Council Member Bokey, I would just remind the council members if you have comments while you're at the table to speak into that microphone so that we have our legislative record, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, good evening, my name is JB Herr. I'm one of the project managers here at the City of Lakewood, Public Works Engineering. And the first project we're going to be talking about today is the South Tacoma Way Road Improvement from 80th Street to 88th Street. Yeah, you're all welcome to come down and take a look. Apologies to the folks online. We are having a hard time showing this site plan online. It's a rather large drawing, but they will be available on the city webpage soon after we're finished here. A pretty straightforward project, this is again, a project that's been in the works for a while. We are widening South Tacoma Way and improving the street with a two-inch asphalt overlay. We're including two bike lanes each side and new sidewalks along the west and east side of South Tacoma Way.
Excuse me, quite efficient, from 80th Street to 88th?
Correct, correct, yeah. That's right. And as part of this project, we're also including an upgraded traffic signal at the intersection of 84th Street. Currently, there's a span wire signal and we're going to replace it with a mast arm. Then along with that, we're putting in some landscaping. I think our target is 30% trees, which are correct, yep. And as part of some of the aesthetics is including some colored concrete, dark gray. And you can see the symbol legend at the top on either end of the site plan.
Are these trees?
Yes.
No, these aren't trees.
They are trees.
They are trees.
They're different than this.
No, that's the same, see the line, you just probably, the line is around there.
Yeah, that looks like a tree for an election. These don't look like trees.
So how many trees in total are you?
That's a good question Troy, you know, how many trees we're looking at putting in?
Right around 80. Right around 80, between 80 and 83.
How many are removed?
Ballpark about 15. So we're adding quite a bit to the canopy here from what it is.
At the north end of South Tacoma Way, we're also installing one of our, I forget what you call these. Gateway signs, yeah.
Oh, up here?
Yep.
By the BNI?
Right at the corner of BNI.
So how much, so you're widening it enough to put in two bike lanes?
Correct.
And are the regular, are the rest of the lanes okay size-wise now?
Yes, and the cross-section is at the bottom of the site plan so you can get an idea of the width of the lanes.
So, in a couple of places where it says right-of-encroachment to be cleared, what does that mean?
Right, so we have about eight to nine property owners that have what we call right-of-way encroachment. That could mean a fence or a gate or even a sign, even in the aerial space that's crossing over from private property to right-of-way. At the moment, none of those will impact the construction of this project. But we are getting with each of the property owners to agree that at some point in time, through a right-of-way encroachment agreement, that if we needed that space or it would need to be removed or relocated, that the owner would agree to it at their, at their expense.
So are we going to get the owners to agree to that before construction? Even though the encroachment may not be resolved during construction?
That's correct.
What's the most significant of them?
Oh, probably, there is, I can't remember the name of this property, but they have some outdoor seating that's at the address of 8302 South Tacoma Way. But for the majority of them, it's, it's a bit of sign encroachment and fences or gates, but fairly minor.
There is a property here that's listed as 3512 84th Street, but it's in the middle of the of this block. What is, what is that property? Is that affiliated with logistics center that's on 84th Street but is set back from South Tacoma Way? I mean, it's just sort of an odd address to have, right there.
That's a good question, I think. I'll have to confirm, but if that were the case, that the frontage must be on 84th Street. But I, I'm not sure, we'll have to, we'll have to confirm that.
That's a great way to view it.
Yeah, thank you.
Are we having to put in additional lighting or are we changing the lighting? Or what's the lighting situation?
Actually, I'll have to defer to Troy, help me out with the street lighting.
So the existing lighting on the west side is on utility poles and on the east side of the road, we will be adding new streetlights. So new streetlights on the east side, up and down the corridor. West side gets the existing lights remain.
And these will be not on a pole?
Those will be on aluminum poles, new, not wood, aluminum poles. It's, it's pretty scattered on the east side. Where they, where they are on the east side, we're going to leave them be, but we will add to get the lighting up to roadway standards for the corridor.
As you enter Lakewood from Tacoma and you come up and you pass 80th Street where you're going to put the gateway sign. The sign that's there now is multilingual. So is there a way to, because it's the International District, is there a way to, 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 to look at? And you know, some of our gateway signs, there is below that, that says Springbrook Neighborhood or yeah, yeah, is there a way to make that put a multilingual version of that there?
I would, I mean, I don't know if doing the actual gateway sign with a bunch of multilingual, because you would, would eliminate a bunch, but maybe it's street banners, something like that could be looked at. I think, because this is so permanent and you could not be a very, you know, we could miss being inclusive, I think there. But I think street banners would be something to really speak to the International District.
Something we can certainly look into is putting the street banner arms on the light poles if that would be something the council be interested in.
And then what accommodations are there for bus stops and the shelters that go with stops? Because I don't, I think there are some of them, but I don't see them highlighted on here. For instance, there's, there's, there's one right in this area that there's a bus stop with a a current shelter. And there's one up near 84th Street. And maybe the, that's maybe the only two on the going north. And, and, but I'm not sure where those are, but where there are bus stops and existing shelters or proposed shelters by Pierce Transit, we want to make sure that they're there and accommodated.
Absolutely, and so in the, in the black concrete segments, it's not shown, but we would, we would leave a thickened spot for them to be able to pour, put their shelters within the black concrete segments.
Okay, but during, we relocate what's there now to where, where it would work?
Correct, we, we ask Pierce Transit to move the shelter out at the onset of construction so we don't damage anything. Then they come back after, we coordinate with them to put the shelter where they see fit best.
And the speed limit?
35.
35 and we're posting it at what intervals? I mean, we certainly ought to post it at the city limit.
Correct. Yeah, and, and typically, we put them back roughly where we had them before because we, we have that, we'll need to look into seeing exactly what we have on this. I don't have the answer for the signage as this is approaching 90%.
Okay. And on the from I think in this section anyway, the east side is actually City of Tacoma. Is that not right?
Yep, starting from about where Homestead, Homestead Restaurant, I think it's right here.
City limit is right here, on both sides.
Okay, so this is all, like, any place that we're expanding the right-of-way or anything or that is Lakewood and then not.
Are there any other questions? We'll move on to the next one if we don't have any, thank you very much for that, that's a nice sized project.
Okay, timeline?
So the timeline, we're looking to go out to advertisement for construction in October, November, depending on when we can get releases from the federal oversight we have. And then construction probably starting in January, February. Timeline for the length of the actual construction is probably about six months of work within the roadway. And then the signal will come in at 84th, kind of as we have the other projects, probably about eight, nine months after the start of construction.
Okay, our next project is Nyansha Road Southwest, which goes from Gravelly Lake North down to Gravelly Lake South. So as we're looking at the plan here, and again apologies for the folks online, to your left on this plan is the south and you'll see the existing roundabout at the Gravelly Lake Drive on the south end. To the north, we have to, we had to separate the roundabout design, but that is a concept at this point. We're looking to counsel on whether a roundabout or a traffic signal, which is what we have now at the intersection of Gravelly Lake and Nyansha to the north. But we're proposing a roundabout design that we would like you to review and take a look at. So brief overview, this will be a one lane each way with a center turn lane. And it'll be new sidewalks on both sides, on the west and east side. On the east side will be a six-foot wide sidewalk and on the west side will be a 10-foot wide sidewalk. No bike lanes, but the new 10-foot sidewalk on the west side would provide an opportunity for bicyclists and shared use. Yes.
Thank you. Can you tell us about any lighting that would be on here?
Right, so there is existing street lighting on the east side of Nyansha. We are proposing new street lighting, but there are some constraints. On the west side along Nyansha, there are existing power poles and power lines. So at the moment, we're considering 15-foot-high aluminum streetlights. Oh, I'm sorry, concrete, concrete streetlights. And that'll be the, that'll be the idea moving forward for this project.
So when you speak about the concrete streetlights, that would be the same design that's on Gravelly Lake Drive from Washington to Nyansha along that, that side there?
That's correct, yep. The intent would be to match what we already have on Gravelly Lake.
I think not having a significant mix of streetlight types because this is and would continue after construction to be one of the most significant gateways into the city that comes in and perhaps one that's, you know, particularly for anyone coming from an I-5 traveling north and looking to get in, to go, to do that. So other than the obvious detour route of taking Gravelly Lake Drive all the way around, what sort of a detour would, would impact the Nyansha Park neighborhood, which is to the, to, to, to the north of, of Nyansha? And primarily, there's, there's really one, two roads, I guess, that come off of this into that. But, and are we going to do anything that would be? First thing, on, on Nyansha Park Drive, is do anything that would be any temporary, be some speed mitigation for people that are cutting through?
Troy is a better answer to that.
So that's an excellent question. So first of all, we're in the very, very preliminary onset of this. We're at 30% design, we're approaching 30% design, we're not even there quite yet. What we're looking at with this project is potentially the Lakewood Water District partnering with us again on this segment, though that still needs to be kind of hammered out. They have initially thought we were going to completely pulverize the road and we're kind of going back on that strategy here and keeping the road base as it sits and building an overlay on top of it, which would mean they have a significantly larger investment in patching and restoration over the top of their pipe. So they, we need to, you know, hear their response back. And the reason why I preface that in this conversation is it really depends upon whether or not we completely close the road off or if we leave the road open and do it as we typically are able to do it. It's wide enough with the, with the roadway prism, if we leave it open as it is, you know, it can, it can be done with that. However, if their pipe lands up in the middle of the road, it becomes a lot more difficult to keep Nyansha itself open. As far as the roundabout goes, we would not propose putting in concrete panels for, for the center circulating motion of the roundabout at this particular location, which would mean we could stage it so that we do not need to close it beyond more than a couple of weekends here and there. So the mitigation for completely closing the road becomes significantly lower. Again, we're at the very, very onset of this, but we're trying to keep the roads open as much as we can, if that makes sense.
Thank you, I understand, I get that you're at the very, very beginning. So you're saying that with this roundabout, is it like the shorter one? You said concrete, no, concrete walls, so I, I'm sorry, I'm not a engineer.
Sorry about that, on, on the Washington Boulevard and the Gravelly Projects, we made concrete pavement in the middle of the roundabouts. So it takes several days, almost the upwards of a week for that to cure before we can put live traffic on it. This would be asphalt pavement around the outside.
Got it, so would that roundabout ever have like the landscaping in it and all the other stuff? And it's going to be wired too? So it's something beautiful could be in there at some point? And then I also hear what Council Member Branford is saying. Again, I know you're at the preliminary stages, but I would love to know what the detour routes are going to be, all of that kind of stuff off of Nyansha Park and Hillcrest area, so thank you.
Real quick, I'll speak to the detours. If we were to detour, it would only be for local access people accessing the Nyansha area. So those in, within the Nyansha Park, the 116th, that, that sort of thing. The cut-through traffic, if you will, would have to go all the way around the lake on Gravelly Lake Drive or 112th to Bridgeport to get around. So that would be roughly the strategy we're looking at. And it would be limited to the amount of time that the water main was going on.
So let's, let's talk about the roundabout. Staff is making the recommendation that we have a roundabout. There's a light there currently, it seems to work okay. Go, go through your thought process and why you think a roundabout's better for that location? And how much property are we going to need to take?
So in either condition, we need to take the corner, the south, I guess this is the southwest corner of the intersection. About 15 feet of the existing pavement sits on private property as it sits. There, there are, you know, prescribed rights already on that. But we will need to take that either way because we'll be widening with the sidewalk for the traffic signal. With the new traffic signal going in there, if that's the route that the city ends up going. The reasoning for really the idea of moving to a signal there is it really sets up your green street loop. Number one, it provides a nice landscaped entrance to your green street loop. And number two, there's a lot of different options with that green street loop coming down of, of potentially doing boulevard-type things. And this roundabout would serve as one of the turnaround points for people if you end up putting a boulevard in there, something of that nature, it really does. The other thing it does is it does add to the safety. While you haven't had a significant number of accidents, the safety would be much, much higher here than the traffic signal.
But, I'm sorry, don't, wasn't there some accidents there? Because I remember they came to council and talked about some traffic mitigation issues. Was it up there, I'm sorry, up there, yeah, but it was in the general vicinity, okay?
Yeah, you know, I'm in favor of a roundabout as opposed to the existing traffic signal because it is really awkward if you are on Gravelly Lake Drive and you're approaching from the south where you sort of have to get into the right lane, either right or left, depending upon where, where you are going. And I frequently see people who are, didn't move left and want to continue to go straight from the right lane and that becomes exciting to be able to go and do that. I, I, I think there is some land, existing landscaping that was put in by Keep Lakewood Beautiful in the early days of the city that's essentially a traffic island and there's a small monument or, or sign to do that, but that, in this design, that would be being removed to be able to go and do that. I, I, I guess the the other thing is, is that when we did with a very similar design, Gravelly Lake Drive from Washington Boulevard down, we ended up at a number of locations of where we had these signs that says, you can't cross the street here. Okay, okay, that, that made no sense to anybody because they were at bus stops of where depending on whether you're getting on or off the bus, you needed to. But there was, there was some reason of why we say, well, we're not going to enforce it. But somebody with the money to pay for it made us put those signs up. Is that going to be repeated as we have a number of streets particularly entering this from either side here? Or, or we don't intend to do that?
Sure thing, yeah, no, we do not intend to put any more of those signs out out in this area. There are strictly a federal requirement on federal aid jobs where we do not have crossings that people could potentially use. As a matter of fact, we are looking at a couple of enhanced crossings, one or two enhanced crossings in this segment, potentially at Nyansha Park and potentially a little bit closer to 100 and, what is it, 116th? And 116th would be the two that we're kind of looking at. At, at kind of putting enhanced crosswalks over RRFPs or rectangular, but flashing beacons would be what we'd be looking at.
The, the two segments that we completed on Gravelly Lake Drive that are from going on and the, and with the 10-foot-wide sidewalk, which have been really well-received by the community, but the intent was to create this to be a walkable loop destinations to do that. And we put some parking in the vicinity of Lakewood Gardens. But is there any opportunities here to enhance that with a bench or three or four along this segment and maybe along some of the other segments? If we're really going to encourage people to consider this 10-foot-wide sidewalk all the way around as a linear park?
There, there's absolutely a potential, there's a significant There's a significant amount of right-of-way at one hundred and seventeenth and one hundred and eighteenth in that vicinity. There's a significant amount of right-of-way down there. We, not certain how much we want to mess with that too much because there's a lot of mature trees down there that look really, really nice. But it is something we could certainly investigate.
Well, you know, I think some small spaces of where there's a pad that's maybe it goes three feet off the sidewalk or something to do that, that would provide a place for walkers and non-motorized folks to stop and rest if they're trying to make that whole loop, which is going to be a couple miles.
So, I'm not a civil engineer, but when we build roads, they've got a little bit of a dome to them, right? So, they shed water. Are we moving the center line of Nyansha as a result of this, as we have wider sidewalk on one side than the other? Does that impact how that cross-section of road looks?
Yeah, the crown line will definitely need to remain within the two-way left-turn lane. We don't like to put the crown line in the middle of a lane for bikes or motorcycles or pedestrians, or not really pedestrians, but bikes, to catch a wheel on it or anything like that. So, we will make sure that the crown line remains in the center. The idea behind the pavement remaining, we're going to try to chase some grant money with this. And it really becomes advantageous to chase a little bit extra grant money on this to keep the road as well as a potential saving. Number one, the road isn't in terrible shape. The rating on it, I just pulled it, it varies between sixty-five and seventy-two. So, it's not at the point where it's shot. It's the amount of cost difference between completely pulverizing the road out and going over the top is about a million dollars. So, that's really what we're looking at for something that's not savings. Plus, it really gives us a good chance for a grant opportunity. So, that's roughly what we're looking at here.
So, if we're not going to pulverize the road, but we're going to overlay it, how does that affect the city's policy and rules on cuts? For instance, on a brand-new road like that? Is there a five-year moratorium? But does that exist if you're just doing an overlay?
Yes.
In the same way?
Yes, the moratorium remains in effect whether you're doing an overlay or a brand-new road, either way.
The dollar values in the packet, is that the cost for design or for the whole build?
The dollar values in the packet are for the entire build.
So, do those represent the million-dollar of pulverizing the whole thing or not?
So, some of the budgeted amount currently did not take into account some of the right-of-way stuff that has popped up on us at this. In addition, inflation's been a little bit rough. So, that's potentially what you're looking at right now is us at thirty percent, not really fully having a firm, firm number yet. Just kind of getting the feeling we need to go chase some grant money to make sure that we're doing okay on this.
Are there any other questions?
Okay. So, when we do parks projects, we reach out to the community to give them a chance to speak up on things. Do we do the same thing for transportation projects?
Absolutely. So, for the South Dakota Way project, we did have an open house. We had not planned on doing, we planned on doing kind of a flyer for this to let people know here in the coming weeks, as well as give them contacts to the city staff and post the plans online. We're trying to more morph toward more a online webpage for some of these larger projects so that people can look at the stuff and comment back to us on it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much for all that you did here and. Okay, thank you very much, staff, for that, Mr. Herr and Mr., well, Troy. And so, next, we have items tentatively scheduled for the July 1st, 2024 Regular City Council Meeting. We have the School District Report. We have the awarding of the bid for the Lake Stillicum Interlock and Bridge Repair Project, authorizing the sale, purchase and sale agreement of 12795 Gravel Lake Drive Southwest, the resolution setting the date of our public hearing on a road vacation on Underth Street, the authorization of the acquisition of real property under threat of condemnation for park purposes related to tax parcel 5140001191. Review of the first quarter financial report and review of financing options. The city manager will tell us what the financing options are for. And review the inter-local agreement for multi-jurisdictional specialty teams in Pierce County, reports by the city manager. So, other than that, so that's next week on July 1st in these chambers. And next is reports by the city manager, Mr. Caulfield.
Thank you, Councilmember Volkey, and good evening, councilmembers. Just a few updates. First off, I'd like to just start off with recognition of some of the work that our patrol officers did today. They were down at Lowe's and took down an organized retail theft group, including four individuals, including one, who is responsible for stealing over a hundred thousand dollars worth of merchandise from area Lowe's within our region here. And it was a great partnership between our patrol officers as well as Lowe's loss prevention. They actually had a couple of folks inside the store that were, you know, loading up the carts with, of, you know, goods and such. And then there was two that were outside, kind of keeping a lookout. And LPD was able to, with loss patrol, be able to kind of track and monitor them. And then when they came outside, they took all four of them down. And again, highly organized, had been around for a while. And then one of the four individuals responsible individually for over a hundred thousand dollars. So, I just wanted to just let the council know that that's the kind of work that our police officers are doing day in and day out out there. Also, I wanted to report, I believe this is a really huge watershed moment, not just for the city of Lakewood, but for medium-sized cities, is that we learned on Friday from Congresswoman Strickland and her team that the city has been awarded a 1.1 million-dollar RACE grant, which is a federal grant. This is something that we've been chasing the last couple of years. It's for our downtown loop project, which actually, if you start out here at City Hall, go straight up to Fifty-Ninth, and then comes across on Bridgeport and then comes down, or Mount Dahoma, Bridgeport, that area, and then comes down Gravel Lake Drive, and then comes right out here to Main Street and then back in front to Fifty-Ninth. And this 1.1 million dollars will allow us to bring that project to thirty percent design, basically what you saw here this evening with Nyansha. That in turn will then allow us to pursue construction funds through the RACE program, which based on today's dollars would be in the twenty to twenty-five million dollar range, potentially a little bit more. Probably the soonest we would be able to apply for that would be in two years. So, maybe in 2026, but probably more like 2027. We'll see how it goes because this planning process is probably going to take at least eighteen months, once we get underway, which will be sometime later this year, just given all the other projects that we have in the queue. But also, in terms of getting access to the funds, it does take a few months for us to be able to do that. This is also a major win because it is funding that's coming to medium-sized cities, which is another policy objective of this city and the city council. And so, I feel like we have kind of cracked the dam there and beginning to open up the floodgates for federal funds coming directly to medium-sized cities. Because as you know, major metropolitan areas do well, as well as rural communities. But again, medium-sized cities, not so much. So, really want to thank Congresswoman Strickland and her team and their perseverance and working side-by-side with us on this. And of course, the Congresswoman taking point back in Washington, D.C. to be able to secure these funds. So, again, it's a really, really big deal. Also, just wanted to let you know that the city of Gim Hay, they're going to be visiting with us. So, their dates have changed again. They're still coming in on Wednesday, July 17th. However, they will be leaving in the early afternoon of Sunday, July 21st. And right now, we are working on a kickoff luncheon on Thursday, July 18th. And so, more to follow, more to follow on that. And then I know next week, our deputy city manager and chief financial officer, Todd Kraus, will be here to give you an update on our first quarter financial report. I do want to let you know that, you know, overall, we have hit our financial targets. Our operating revenues are doing a little bit better than anticipated. Our operating expenditures are essentially right where they need to be. I'd prefer them to be a little bit less, but personnel costs are really what's driving that. And then our reserves continue to be very, very strong. So, no concerns there. But just, it is still getting a little tight. I have issued a directive to the department directors to try and pause, you know, all non-essential spending out of the general fund, not all the other funds, but it's the general fund. That's the one that is most suspect to kind of the economic woes that, you know, cities are beginning to face right now. So, that's kind of where we are. I think that impact, that directive, though, that was issued, that was issued after first quarter. So, we'll see the results of that in the second and third quarter financial reports. And again, I'm confident that we'll continue to meet our, meet or exceed our financial objectives. And then as it relates to upcoming events, of course, farmers' market again continues to do well, get another summer concert tomorrow evening down at Fort Stillicum Park. Also, on Wednesday, you know, we have two major employee appreciation events. And so, our summer event is on Wednesday at Fort Stillicum Park from eleven-thirty to two-thirty, if you'd like to come by and just stop by and say hello. On Saturday, June 29th, over at Camp Murray, it's a change of command and retirement event in order, in honor of Major General Brett Doherty, who is going to be retiring as the adjutant general of all that is the Washington State National Guard. And then also on Saturday, JBLM has moved up their Freedom Fest event. Typically, they have it on July 4th of that weekend, and they moved it up a little earlier this year. So, it's on Saturday, July 29th. And you should have all received some formative invite on that, including how to get on base if you wish to attend with your families. So, with that, Councilmember Volkey, that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Any questions for the city manager, Mr. Councilmember Bransdeter?
Yeah, Mr. Caulfield, there is, on the agenda for our next meeting, there is a consent agenda item regarding setting a date for a public hearing on proposed vacation of 6928 One Hundredth Street Southwest. And there's a tax parcel number. Usually vacations are pieces of right-of-way or things like that. They're not actual tax parcels. And this is, this address is like in the midst of a residential area is.
I don't have the specifics.
I haven't seen or heard anything about what really is the piece of property that's down there. Is it the traffic island that's at that intersection or?
I don't have the specifics of that, Councilmember Bransdeter, at my fingertips. However, we will have it for you next Monday as part of the public hearing pursuant to Washington state law. When we get these requests, we have a timeline that we need to adhere to. And just like any other street vacation, we'll be bringing it forward to you on Monday. But I don't have, we'll have answers to those questions on Monday. I don't have them at my fingertips.
I just haven't seen a public notice yet about the request to vacate this property and where it's going. So, in terms of, and while we're setting the public hearing for a week after the the date that we're going to do this, I'm just not quite sure that there's much information that the public would have to be able to actually say anything at a public hearing if we can get something out about the details of what this is. Because it's a little bit difficult to, even if you go to that location, it's difficult to envision what is being asked for.
We will have all that for you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? I do have a question. You mentioned budget. And just as a follow-up, because I think you've given us some information, and you can certainly write us if you don't know off the top of your head, the impact, it's things when you talk about next biennium, things like the impact of the new standards for public defense. What's going to be the two-year impact of that? Do you remember?
Councilmember Volkey, it will be, in 2025, it will be significant. And in 2026, it will be more significant. And in 2027, it will be really, really significant. And we're talking our public defense costs going from about 550, $560,000 a year to a million and a half to perhaps even $2 million.
Yeah, those are the, those are the kind of things that we're going to be challenged by going, going forward. A lot of local governments are going to be, but.
I imagine that this will be, and we're, Councilmember Bransdeter and I were down at the AWC conference this past week, and I had a chance to run into a couple of folks at AWC and just, as well as our governmental team. And, you know, just wanted to note that, get their commitment that funding for cities and counties in the area of public defense needs to be a priority. And so, they concurred with that. So, I imagine that will need to be one of your key priorities as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Bransdeter?
Yeah, I would just say that we had multiple discussions around this at the AWC conference. There is nothing unique about our situation, is it? You know, just about everyone is, cities, large and smaller, are facing this, being able to go and do that, that it's a sort of a problem that screams for a state resolution to be able to go and do that. And there's, I'm sure that cities throughout the state are going to be talking to their legislative delegations about coming up with the mitigation that's necessary to do that. So, I think it's a, it's a big problem, but I think that it's a recognized problem so that there'll be some efforts to come to a resolution of it. You know, but you kind of have to brace ourselves for the impact in case it gets to us before a solution is in place.
I will also say this, that if the state does not provide cities and counties significant revenue, then it's a zero-sum game with our budget. We don't, you know, we're a very efficient organization from how we budget. And that means that, I mean, we can't just absorb that. That's going to have an impact on service levels across multiple fronts. You know, that's just a, that's just a fact.
And it is general fund money.
It's all general fund money.
It's really, really rough.
Most of the, most of the cities that I talked to were talking that if they didn't get some help, the bill payer, because of the zero-sum piece over there, was going to be a number of police officers.
Any more questions for the city manager? Do you have any more comments, Mr. Caulfield?
No, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the updates on the events and the Gim Hay visit. With that, councilmember comments, Mr. Laura Sella.
Thank you, Councilmember Volkey. I enjoyed the farmer's market last week. We had good weather, which was a nice change. We had good weather, which was a nice change from the previous two weeks where we had wind and rain. Lots of, lots of folks out there last week, which was really nice. And got to try some new food. There's a new sandwich food vendor there that wasn't there last year. So it's good stuff. Other than that, I've got the South Sound nine-one-one meeting on Wednesday morning, so I'll be going to that representing the city. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bell.
Thank you. Let's see, I just wanted to say there's really great reporting about the retail patrol at Lowe's. I appreciate all that our police department does. And then I, it was, it's really interesting to see what is the possible things that are going to be happening along Nyanza. I think that that loop that goes around is going to be great. I think it's going to bring a lot of walkability, obviously, and just some great, I am getting some outdoor space. So I love that presentation too. And then last Thursday, I think it was, I went to the Lakewood Chamber of Commerce event at the Gulf Tacoma Country and Golf Club for the Armed Forces Connection. And the guest speaker was Major General Matthew McFarlane. And so that was very interesting to hear about him, talk with him, see how JBLM is interacting with the city and all that is happening there. So that's it for me. Thank you.
You, Councilmember Branstadter?
Oh, I mentioned before I did attend the AWC conference. There are breakout sessions on a variety of things and I acquired scattering of handouts that I'll, I'm just, I'll just make copies and have them distributed to your boxes up in the council office. That's all I have.
Thank you, Member, Councilmember Branstadter. So I'll start off with the PCRC met last week. Councilman, or Mayor Whalen called in so that we'd have a sufficient number of votes. We were anticipating that one of the cities would come forth with an amendment. They had indicated, actually, they had had their staff work on an amendment. The amendment would have included our hundredth street project to add. The moment came and the moment went, they did not make, they didn't make the amendment. And, and it was really their lead to do. At the last minute, they decided against it. So we had a vote on the, the package as a whole. The city of Tacoma voted, so it's easier to say the package passed as is, as was presented. The city of Tacoma, their three votes voted no. Lakewood's two votes voted no, and the city of Puyallup's two votes were no. Other than that, it was all yes. It sounded interesting that even though the Portland Freight Project wasn't, was the one that was next on the list and would have been funded, the port voted in favor of the, of the existing package. So I'm not sure where their priorities are right now. So Lakewood had one item on there that is a hundredth street Lakewood Drive to Lakeview Avenue. So that it will be overlaid and is seven hundred and fifty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. And that was the one project. City of Sumner did very well, something in the neighborhood of eight million dollars. So they have about a little over one percent of the population and they got about close to thirty percent of the total money. There was some discussion as usual, when these things are over, oh, we need to fix this. Well, as someone who spent a year trying to fix it, where the staff fought us, the other cities that do well fought us. And when it got down to voting at the PCRC, PCRC didn't want to change anything. And now all of a sudden you heard people saying, well, this isn't fair. A lot of what's going on is they've now essentially, and this is something we discussed when I was on that ad hoc committee, is you have essentially eliminated all the small cities from this competition. It's really, there were two small cities that applied. And Furcrest did well, they got a non-motorized plan. There's also some recognition that the non-motorized things score much better and then the road projects, because they're done different scoring models. And but when they decide to hand out the money, they give the top road project money, they give the top pedestrian product or non-motorized project money. And then they dole out the rest based on the score. But they're using different scoring models, right? So it's, it's like comparing basketball to football or something, right? And you're saying, well, you know. So it, it's messed up, but immediately of course, oh, we need to have a committee. We need to, I'm like, you, you go and you do it. I don't, I don't hold out much hope that this thing is going to get any better because the smaller cities especially keep just deferring to staff, right? They just, the TCC folks control the process. They like the process and we defer to them. So, so it wasn't the worst result. We did get something, but it wasn't the best result. And I think overall, you're starting to see that the small cities are just now out completely. And the guy from Puyallup, Ned Whitting, went through and said, well, in twenty sixteen, I'm teens, small cities applied. You know, in twenty twenty, it was this many, and now it's two. So that's where we are now. It's possible. It's possible that there's, there's some, and I don't know the mechanics behind this, but sometimes more money shows up or certain cities send back their monies. And, and right before the vote, the chair, who's from Furcrest, kind of let everyone know, I'm hearing on good authority that there'll be extra money and, you know, the other projects will get funded. The Tacoma project is sitting right there as the next or the next after that. The Tacoma project's a big project, so it would take quite a bit of money. Sometimes some of the local cities don't always get to their money either, but I wouldn't hold my breath. So Planning Commission, Wednesday night. They continue their work through the, the, the comprehensive plan. I would note, the city manager put together a nice piece in his weekly letter to us about the changes that are being proposed on shorelines. And so the, the Planning Commission is working their way through that. But this is going to end up on our, on our desk. So no matter what they decide, it's still going to end up on our desk. The numbers, you know, the, the shoreline setbacks will change. And the, the question is, is, you know, where, where would we like them to be? So this is going to be, I think, an ongoing issue till through the whole comprehensive plan process. So with that, any other questions, comments? We'll go to the order. Thank you very much, and we are adjourned.